That was the gavel. Member Campbell come to order. Call to order, the meeting of the Salem School Committee, May 5th, 2025, 7:00 PM. This meeting is taking place in person at 29 Highland Avenue, Room 227 in Salem. You can also join via Zoom posted in the meeting agenda. First order of the meeting is approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda, seconded.
Motion made by Member Cornell, seconded by Member Miranda. Under discussion, seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? None, the matter carries. Public comment. The Salem School Committee would like to hear from the public on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. Spanish interpretation is available for anyone who needs it. The members of the school committee would like to remind the public that Salem Public School students regularly attend school committee meetings. We encourage all meeting participants to model respectful and productive public discourse for our young learners. Do we have any public comment in the room?
Good evening, Mayor Pangalo, Superintendent Sreik, members of the school committee, and members of the Salem community. My name is Anne Berman. I'm president of the Salem Teachers Union, and I am honored to stand up here today, the first day of Teacher Appreciation Week, to say thank you to our educators. Every single one of them, regardless of their role or title, deserves to be recognized for their service to our kids and community every single day from August, whatever day we started this year, I don't even know what it was, '26, '27, something like that, all the way through till June 20th.
After Labor Day, after Labor Day.
Pardon me?
After Labor Day this year, Anne.
It was after Labor Day? I don't remember. Whatever. It's all been a blur. But even better than that, I see you all have your new contracts, all printed, ready to go, very pretty looking. We'll be back at it again in about less than two years, so hold on to them tight, and they're looking lovely. But tonight, I would like to publicly congratulate Annie Cruz, our family engagement facilitator at Bentley and Horace Mann, for being awarded a distinguished service award in the category of non-licensed member in the pre-K to 12 system from AFT Massachusetts. Annie was nominated by the union's executive board for her work in getting the family engagement facilitators recognized in our last contract, as well as her work on the union's negotiating team during our most recent contract negotiations. Annie was honored at Friday evening's awards ceremony, which was held at the Edward M. Kennedy Institute in Boston. So STU has had a number of awards, awardees, award, whatever you want to say. In the past, I want to say five years, we've had a number of our members receive these distinguished awards. They're up against members across the state of Massachusetts. So I'm really proud of Annie. She and her two children attended the ceremony with her, and it was great. So we have another awardee in our rank and file members, and just wanted to let everybody know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment from the chambers? If not, do we have any public comment on Zoom? Our next item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda, which are the minutes of the regular meeting of April 28th and the warrant of May 1st.
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion made by Member Cornell, seconded by Member Campbell. Under discussion, seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, the matter carries. Student representatives report.
Yeah, can I? Yeah, I have a brief report. Mark is being inducted into the National Honor Society tonight, so let's give Mark a round of applause. I did have a chance to meet with the student advisory group today. We had a strong meeting, and unfortunately, Mark is moving on, but we talked about elections for next year already, so we could get somebody seated for the first meeting of the next school year. But I did want to point, the students, we had Zee was there again to talk about what he did to address, or what the facilities team did to address, the bathroom concerns that the students raised, especially the locker room bathrooms with flies and toilet seats that needed to be replaced. Access to, we talked a lot about access to menstrual health products, about location, and the students gave us some ideas for that. And we also talked about the feedback that the students had given around the new building we've already, that's been shared in some of the design meetings in the last week. So I wanted to show them that their input actually is making a difference in the work that we do. We also looked at the recently released dropout and graduation rate data, and we discussed the following questions. What specific concerns do you have, and how would you address them? What solutions and ideas do you have for ensuring that a higher percentage of students graduate in four years? They pointed to concern about female students graduating at lower rates than male students. They also pointed to concerns about multilingual learners and the higher drop, even though we've seen a significant improvement in dropouts, or a decline in dropouts, they, our numbers of MLs and high need students are higher. And so we talked about creating a buddy program, creating a system for newcomers when they arrive at the high school, what that could look like. They've also, they also talked about the importance of how we use on-track conferences, which are, the students seem to like, but they don't feel like, they want it to be a little more intentional for students that are really struggling, and to help them who are off track, what that looks like. They would like there to be a little more intentionality around that, so we talked a lot about that. And what was great is, for the first time, we had almost as many new Liberty students in the room as Salem High. We had four new Liberty students, and they seemed jazzed to be part of the group. I asked, they, I thought they had very compelling feedback around, we asked them, I asked them about the location of the new school, about whether they wanted to, if we could build a new Liberty at the new high school. They, at first, they were like, no way, and then they would, then they said, well, if it would make it easier for us to get to sports and other activities, they would like that, but they, they basically want to be close, but not too close, is what they said. And we did talk a lot about their, the issues with their space today, and they invited all the students to come to our final meeting, which I am going to invite the school committee to. So our June meeting's going to be at New Liberty, and we're going to bus the Salem High kids there, so that they can get a tour of New Liberty. They think there's a lot of fascination about what New Liberty is, and what it looks like, how many kids go there, and so, and we'll start planning for next year, like I said, with election. We have an awesome group, and I do feel like it's grown stronger, and I do want to thank Mark, and we'll recognize him at the next meeting, for his leadership of the group, and congratulations to him on the National Honor Society. So that's the update.
All right. Do you want to just keep going with your superintendent's report?
So Anne stole my thunder, but, you know, she, she gets the microphone first. I do want to take a moment to extend my gratitude to all the Salem Public School staff during this week of educator appreciation, and we have some real-life educators here in the crowds. I do just want to call out Laura Tuwi, Taya Stefano, Kelly Quinn. Anne Berman's a teacher, too. I don't know if people know that, but no, I'm just a music educator. And I do want to just call out Taya, because this is a true story. The other night, I was at the design meeting, this is a true story, and the parent, one of the parents, who's a Spanish-only speaker who came to the event, she told me that her daughter had Taya in, or I think daughter had Taya in class, I think it's a daughter, and was so, she, first of all, she loved Ms. Stefano, but said that she was so impressed that she spoke Spanish. And she didn't know that at the beginning of the school year, but the fact that she can communicate with her every day, and I know you're not the Spanish side of dual language, but I do know you speak Spanish, and she made it very clear that that changed so much of her experience, is that you could communicate with her on a regular basis. So I want to give you a round of applause for that. That is not made up, that is real. Oh, and you speak another language?
Bulgarian, too.
Bulgarian, okay, okay, excellent, all right. And you do speak English, so you're trilingual. But I do want to just say that our employees, everyone in Salem are educators, because every single one of them helps craft the student experience. So we call everybody, this is for everybody in the system this week, and anything I say or do is not gonna, is going to fall short of what our dedicated staff do each and every day. So much goes unnoticed, so much goes without fanfare, but these folks give hugs, wipe tears, they cheerlead, they bandage cuts, they organize field trips, they attend sporting events. This weekend, I was at the Little League opening day with the mayor, and there were staff who did not have kids there, who were coaching, and who were also there to support students. I was blown away by that. They were, they open snacks, they celebrate academic milestones, they prepare engaging and challenging lessons, they inspire, and above all, are constant present for our youth. And I'm grateful to every individual who embodies the core values we have of belonging, equity, and opportunity. This school system and the lives of almost 4,000 children are better because of all of them, and so please join me in celebrating our staff this week. It's, I know it's one week, it should be all year long, but it is important that we take a moment to stop and just acknowledge, I think we have some of the best in the state of Massachusetts. So with that, I'll move on. Anne already mentioned, she stole the thunder, you have brand-new contracts in front of you here, she took all my talking points here, but thank you to the STU for taking the time to really clean this up and make sure that it's a solid, this is as good-looking a contract as I've ever seen, and this is through a lot of work. I know it feels like we negotiated, it wasn't a long time ago, but it needed a lot of cleanup work, and there's a lot of changes, so thank you to the STU. I do want to congratulate all the inductees to the National Honor Society. We have 33 tonight, which is the most we've had, at least since I've been here, and National, and also the National Art Honor Society, which we have 13 inductees this evening. And then tomorrow, one of my favorite events is the Seal of Literacy event is tomorrow, and breakfast at 8:45 will be recognizing, I don't know the exact number, do you know, Dr. T? Okay. It's, it is a record number two tomorrow, so we look forward to celebrating them. And I also want to wish Happy Mother's Day to all our Salem Public Schools' mothers, grandmothers, and those that play the role, those roles in the lives of our children, whether they're biological or not, there's many, so I want to shout out to all those folks as well. So those are my updates for tonight, and now I get to turn the microphone over to the Bentley School. We're very pleased to have the Bentley team, which I sort of already introduced here, to talk about the innovation plan. I do think tonight, the goal is to listen to the team, and then ask questions, give some feedback. I didn't intend for the vote to happen tonight, because I think there are some adjustments that we might want to make, or suggest to the school, because ultimately, the school committee has the authority to approve the innovation plan. I do want to acknowledge that the STU also gave me some feedback, thoughtful feedback that I want to incorporate as well. So the idea would be to get a final vote on this at the next meeting, to sort of put this on the table after we hear from the Bentley team. You have a copy of the slides, there have been a few minor adjustments since I sent, we sent you the slides, so there might be a little updated, but I'm going to turn it over to Principal Rogers and the team from Bentley, who all seem to be wearing some sort of green, well, no, at least half of you.
It happens, it happens sometimes.
For Celtics, yes, thank you.
For Bentley. That's our color, that's our, those are our school colors. That's our school color. All right. As you know, I'm Liz Rogers, I'm the principal at Bentley. So grateful to be here, to be able to talk about our innovation plan renewal, which just also gives us a little spotlight to brag on some things that we've done over the last five years. I'm going to have the rest of the team introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Laura Tuwi. I am an ML coach now, and I am on the BALT, which is the Bentley Academy Leadership Team.
Hola, me llamo Mrs. Stefano, Taya Stefano. Soy una de las profesoras de cuarto grado. I'm one of the teachers in the dual-language program in fourth grade. I'm also a member of the Bentley Academy Leadership Team.
Mi nombre es Kelly Quinn, la señora Polard. My name's Kelly Quinn, school counselor at Bentley, and I'm also part of BALT Leadership Team as well.
Great. We're two slides, two slides. Oh, look at that. Those are our names. All right. So when we started to work on the innovation plan renewal back in October, it was a big job this year, we wanted to start in a place of like recognizing the things, recognizing the things that we've done over the past five years since the innovation plan started. And these are just a few, we have more slides with some of our successes, but just a few things to highlight is that when we started in 2020 with our new innovation plan, we also started the dual-language program. And also, if you don't, if you recall, 2020 was also a global pandemic. When we were practicing, when I said that, I went dun dun dun, like as if we could have music in the background, but that is how we started in 2020. And it was slow, I mean, you know, it was, our first class of dual-language students in kindergarten started remotely, learning language, which was a challenge. And now, since 2023, we have a waitlist for enrollment, so that's really exciting to us, to have people kind of really wanting a dual-language program. We also added a pre-K this year, which is super exciting and terrifying, to be honest, if I'm upper elementary, middle school person, to have four-year-olds in the building, but it's been amazing. They're so sweet and cute and fun, and they are all, except for one, because she's moving, coming to our dual-language kindergarten, so that's exciting. We've also increased our number of ML students as we would, because we're a dual-language program, so about half of our students, about 150 of our students are MLs, are multilingual learners. And we've done a lot of work on our attendance. We've gone from really, 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 really high chronic attendance to, we're down 6% from last year at this point. So yeah, and that's many percentage points from 2020. Next slide. It's still me. Okay. Just a brief, we're going to go through some, some other glows that we have. This is our academics based on MCAS, the, on the left side is our ELA. You can see that there's like ups and downs. We've worked a lot on our literacy curriculum. We have a new curriculum that we started this year, so I'm really excited about that, and I hope to see more growth in ELA. And we've made more consistent growth in math, as you can see on the right-hand side on MCAS. This is not me, this is Kelly Quinn, is going to talk a little bit about sort of how we built our foundation to where we are now.
So foundational for our school are our core values, which is IT spells Regar, which in Spanish would translate to English as like watering a plant or a garden. That's intentional, that the acronym for our core value is in Spanish. Part of the goal of dual language is to de-center English, to create space and elevate not only the Spanish language, but other languages. So we think of multilingual students and their families, making sure that there's space and community for everybody. So these five principles are foundational to us as a school, and us creating community and connection for students, as well as their families and for staff. There's two pictures on this slide showing Regar. So the first one are for respeto, for respect, E for equidad, for equity, G for ganar crecimiento, for growth, A for autenticidad, for authenticity, R for responsabilidad, for responsibility. So those are central. The one on the left is describing the expectations in circle. We have circles with students, that was co-created with their teacher and the students. The one on the right is for whole group learning. You'll notice there that the core values are reflected in both languages, and spelt out in both languages, because we're constantly using and switching between these languages. Our families are familiar with Regar as well, and they celebrate with students as they meet these achievements, whether it's individually or in a class, and it's common language. You'll see if you come to our school, in the hallways, in the bathrooms, Regar is constantly posted, and the matrices are co-created with students in both languages, so that we can continue to ground ourselves in our values and support us as a community.
So building, building and improving on our, building and improving continuously, our school culture has been a huge, has been a big thing for us as well. If you step into Bentley, you know that our school culture is literally the, the heartbeat of our thriving learning community, and we will, we will continue to do that. But here, like in these two pictures, up, up top, you'll see one of, I believe that's a third-grade classroom, third-grade classroom, participating in that morning circle, where we, all of our practices in restorative justice. So that's one of the, what's, that's one of the things that we focus on as a school, starting off the morning, right? We gather together as a community, share, talk, address things, areas of growth, areas of glow. So that's that first picture right there. It's really special, that has made a really big impact on our classroom, like our classroom community environment, our school community, and then also the adults as well. Everybody is on the same page, we know that restorative justice, and even just starting the day just like that, has made a huge difference in our mental, like, attitude about how we approach the day. That picture down below, we've really leaned into embracing more joy with our students and feeling, we want our students not to just feel, but to, to be like passionate and excited about coming to school. That is, those are some of our teachers getting down during, during one of our dual-language professional developments in the summer. I think it was, was it a translinguaging activity? I'm not sure. It was, it was really fun. Yeah. And part of that is embracing each other and honoring our differences and similarities as educators, and when we're able to do that, it also translates to the students, they see that. So improving our school culture and focusing in high, high expectations, and also joy, has been really, really important. I think I'm, am I also the next one? It is me. No, no, you go for it. Okay, okay. So anyway, building on building community, see what I did there? As part of our efforts to not only build our community in the school, but also to reach out to the, the rest of the Salem community, you'll see here a few pictures. That top picture is something that's called Cafe Con Learning. Do you want to add to the Cafe Con Learning a little bit, that first picture?
Yeah, so Cafe Con Learning is when we have parents come in, and the kids just share what they did in their class. We do it by grade level. First thing in the morning, so the kids get, parents drop off their kids, they have some refreshments, the kids gather, get their, all organized, and then parents and staff and everybody comes in, and they can share what they've been learning, they can share it in English, they can share it in Spanish, and it's fantastic, it's been very well-received.
Yeah. And they feel like, well, they're not feel, they should be, they're very proud of like their academic achievements as well, and if you're looking from the beginning to the end of the year, students still reflect on events like these. You'll see in the picture to the right, it is a picture of our fifth graders. They wrote Valentine's cards to senior citizens in Salem, in Spanish and in English, using all the multilingual resources. And it, it created a really, it created an opportunity for students to lead and like initiate something, and it also, it was a natural kind of, it was a natural opportunity to spread more of that joy. That picture at the bottom.
This year, we also have, had our first, we have an assessment now for Spanish language proficiency, and we were able to give out several Spanish proficiency awards to mostly fourth graders, but a few third graders that have already reached proficiency in Spanish, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And we went, we gave these awards out at the first ML night in the fall, and that's all the staff that attended on that, in that bottom slide, our Bentley staff, just to be a part of that. And then the last, last picture on this slide is four of our fourth graders, which is our oldest dual-language grade, taking on leadership roles, they're recess coaches in this picture. Okay, this slide is just an overview of the process we went through to re, to look at our innovation plan and make adjustments that needed to be made. And there were, there were many, because when we, and Laura's going to talk, she is going to talk in a little while about, about kind of like the big changes that we had to make. But basically, the process was that Laura, since she was one of the people on the original team that wrote the innovation plan, and I kind of looked over the plan, we reviewed it, and then we made a plan of how we wanted to involve as many people as possible in rewriting it and making it reflect what we actually are doing at Bentley right now, with our dual-language program. We brought it then to the Bentley Advisory Board, where they, we shared with them our plan, and they did an initial look at like the overview part of the innovation plan, and gave some feedback on that. Then from there, we took it to different groups. We took it to our ILT, which is our BALT, Bentley Academy Leadership Team, where they reviewed and revised specific sections that were of interest to them. So we have people from all, all different part, different jobs in the school, like paraprofessionals, different grade band teachers, special ed, so they all took different sections of the innovation plan and revised specific sections that they were most interested in. And then we, you had opportunities to work with paraprofessionals and non-classroom teaching staff to do other sections, so that they were interested in, so there's like sections about specialists and, and things like that. And they gave feedback and further revisions. This was all from October on, so like right through the end of April. And then we had teachers, classroom teachers, and also other, other like specialists and interventionists and things like that, also do feedback and revisions of their specific instructional sections, and then we brought it back to BALT, brought it to our school committee partner, who is Amanda Campbell, who was also on the original innovation plan team, and for final revisions, and, and that's, that brings us to today. So that was essentially our process, and we, the process was intentional around bringing in as many people in our school community as we possibly could.
So as Liz said, I was part of the original innovation plan. We worked together, it was a very long process. Initially, when we first, when we first started, the dual-language was sort of put in there, sort of, not, I want to say last minute, but it was sort of added into it, and it was supposed to be a strand, right, where it was going to be working with the gen ed classrooms, and it's now completely wall-to-wall dual-language. So we had to really go back, like Liz said, and look at all the things that we initially thought were our focuses, and then go back and say, no, no, that's not who we are anymore, so let's take who we are and really incorporate it into the innovation plan. This right here is, you see the first picture is when we did some work with our pairs, that's the other part of it. When we first did the innovation plan, it was really sort of done, we had community members, we had partners, but the staff itself, it was a lot of like me running around to everybody, saying, here's where we are, these are the things we're thinking about. You know, we gave it to everybody to read before they voted on it, but it was, it's a big document, you know? So this time, we were very intentionable, tensionable, intentional about making sure that everybody had access to it, so that you could put your own expertise into it, which I think was great. The one in the middle is also the pairs, and then this is the reading specialist who also looked at it. So everybody looked at it from their lens, which really, I think, made it a really great document, and incorporated everybody. Is, do I have the clicker? Oh, that's me, applicant team.
Oh, it says me, but. This is just a list of the people who are the official applicants for the, for the renewal, which includes several people here now, one of our parents, that's on our Bentley Advisory Board's school site council, our literacy coach, a classroom teacher, and an ML teacher. And you'll, you'll find all of their resumes in there. And I think Laura sort of already talked about some of this.
But also, Kelly Quinn is going to come up and talk. I'm sorry, I like left it like it was my desk, I left everything up here.
You're good. So my understanding is, back in 2020, the innovation plan that was proposed at that time described the social, emotional, and behavioral systems as in development, and were going to be defined, and we've made a lot of growth and progress, and we hope to continue to build on that growth and progress in terms of our systems that we have in place. So as I mentioned before, Regar is foundational to all of our systems. I would say as well, our families are foundational to all of our systems, we engage with them as part of the social, emotional, behavioral supports, and partner with them to support students in that way. Not unlike other schools, we have multi-tiered systems of support, so the MTSS, across those three tiers, and embedded across the three tiers are both restorative justice and PBIS, so the positive behavioral interventions and supports. So what that looks like, tier-one supports that are available to all students would include the classroom circles you saw highlighted before, those happen in both Spanish and in English, throughout the school, throughout the start of the day and at the end of the day, to continue to build connection and community. It also is town halls, where the whole school comes together for assembly, those are conducted in both Spanish and English by staff as well, so we continue to center and elevate Spanish and create. as well. So we continue to center and elevate Spanish and create space for other languages as well. When students break into flocks, because we're roosters, they are multi-grade level groups with different staff from across the school. So they're able to connect with different staff as well. That's when they do activities like the one highlighted with the Community Center, bringing the Valentines for our seniors. So having opportunities like that as well to try to build connection within the school, but also within the community as well. So we continue to try to find ways to connect with students in those ways. In tier two, we have targeted interventions and support. So based on different data points. DESA, we might know at a school level, there's certain lagging skills. We target it in town hall for tier one. But then for tier two, we might have different groups or check-in, checkout. Those are constantly referring back to Regar, but they're also opportunities for students to learn skills that could help them feel more connected into the community so that they can feel successful. When there's situations with students, we're using restorative practices to have conversations, to help students build perspective about where another student's coming from, where they're coming from, to again, continue to build on connection. And then tier three supports are more intensive and individualized supports. It's a smaller number of students may need. We continue to build on Regar, restorative justice, and PBIS. We're constantly partnering with families and community providers. They're familiar with Regar as well. They're familiar with zones of regulation. So we're constantly trying to, between home, community, and school, use the similar language, both in Spanish and in English. We have the materials to help students build their capacity. So that's where we are so far with our tiered systems of support. But we're continuing to try to use data to inform those systems and to build them out as we go.
And this is just sort of touching upon what I said earlier, is that now we are a wall-to-wall dual-language program. So who we were before, we have to readjust in our educational programs. Every, the educational focus is based on the guiding principles of a dual-language program. We use that sort of as our guide. And then we build off from there. We just implemented, I think Liz said this, a new literacy program curriculum. We just got some preliminary access numbers back. When I look at the scores, because that's my life, I love the, when we get the access scores back. And if you look at second and third grade, where they really had a good chunk of learning using that curriculum, they have grown. I think there's only, in both grades, there might be three kids who either stayed the same. I don't think anybody went down in writing, which is unbelievable. I mean, that's always the focus, right? It's always sort of the focus with our ML students. So being really intentional about our educational programming. And then collaborative model, which is the tandem teams. So we have, like, when I think about second and third grade, our ML teacher works very closely with the grade-level teacher in both Spanish and English because she's bilingual. Actually, all of our ML teachers are bilingual, which is great. So they're able to push in for Spanish and for English. And so they can use the SEI strategies or the SSI strategies, right? So you're able to support students who are learning English and students who are learning Spanish too. And so that collaborative model is, you know, always a work in progress. But we're already starting to see the benefits of the, of the way that we're doing it. So I think that's pretty exciting.
Yeah, and, and that, those two things were major shifts in the Innovation Renewal Plan. So they, they look very different. Basically, in the 2020 version of the Innovation Plan, we were tasked with creating behavior systems. So we, it's, and we, I think we have like a, two pages of our document is, is dedicated to that. And then the, the dual-language bilingual program obviously takes up much more space in the, in the new renewal innovation plan. All right. So in the Innovation Plan, I just wanted to briefly mention the autonomies. So there are six areas of autonomy that an Innovation Plan can have. And I just wanted to go over a few that we have used over the last five years. In the curriculum instruction and assessment area, I feel like that's where we've used the most. Obviously, we're a different program than the other schools. So we're using, at this point, we're using a different, a different literacy curriculum in Spanish and English than the rest of the district. We're using Benchmark. We are about to start a new math curriculum next year. And for, the reasons for, for using different curriculum is basically because of what's available in both Spanish and English and the, and the quality of them. So we did a lot of work last year to find Benchmark. I don't, I don't think we could be happier with that program and the outcomes for our students. Writing is something that basically did not exist in our previous program, a previous curriculum, and the kids are writing like crazy. Bridges Math has what seems to be more authentic Spanish language resources and, excuse me, and vocabulary and all of the things that students need to learn math more effectively. So we look forward to using that, starting next year. And we are, have also, you know, over the last few years and going into next year, have a, have a bit of a different assessment calendar than the rest of the district. And we keep tweaking that as we go so that we're making sure that we're not over-assessing our students, but we are assessing them in both languages and in content in both languages. So we're not just assessing their Spanish language skills, but we're assessing their math skills in Spanish and in English. And so it's, it's tricky. It's a tricky balance because we want to get the informations because we wanna, we wanna make sure that we can give students what they need. But we also don't want to over, over-assess them. In the schedule and calendar area, we did have, we use the autonomies to have an extended day and that will end this year. We are still gonna ask for that autonomy in case, so going into next year, we're matching the district in as far as our daily hours, which for us is a reduction of 25 minutes a day. And that doesn't seem like a lot, but it's, it feels like a lot going into next year. We're having to adjust our, our schedule. And we, I hope that we, we'll, everything will be fine. But if we, we would like to keep the potential to extend the day again if we can find the funding for that at some point and if, if we feel like our students still need that. For staffing, we have the autonomy to create, have unique positions. We do have a couple of tutors and we have a STEAM teacher. One of the things in the original Innovation Plan that we were also tasked with was to create a STEAM program. And so we have a STEAM teacher as one of our specialists. So that's a unique role that we have. And obviously, for staffing our building, when we write job descriptions, when we post jobs, many of our positions, including non-teaching positions, it really is beneficial for, for people to be bilingual. Professional development, we've, we do a lot of the professional development that the district offers. But this year, we decided that because we were starting a new literacy curriculum, we asked if we could do our own professional development on our early release days for teachers, whereas the rest of the district, the elementary math teachers, were doing math, a math PD on early release days. We use that time for co-planning with our new literacy curriculum. As Laura too, we mentioned, our ML teachers work very closely with the classroom teachers. So having that co-planning time was invaluable, especially with a new curriculum. Around district policies and procedures, I'm sure you're all aware of our enrollment policy, which is different than the rest of the district. It's connected to the district and it's, and it's, it aligns with the school choice policy. But our enrollment has the lottery as a part of it. And then, and then also our educational model. I think that's, that comes under there. I'm not sure. It also comes under curriculum instruction and assessment, but for some reason, it shows up under the district policies and procedures as well. And then for budget, we're not using any autonomies at this point. There's the autonomy that we could have our, a lump sum budget and, and do something with that. But I've, I have not explored that and we haven't used that at all. And that is basically it. We have time for questions, if anyone has questions.
Amber Campbell.
I don't have a question, just a general thank you and an appreciation for all of the work that your entire team does. It's to no one's surprise here, I love dual language and it's always such a privilege to get to work with you guys. And so I had the chance to come in at the very end and get to see, not at the very end, I didn't, don't want it to sound like that. I got to come in and see after they'd done all of the heavy lifting and I just got to review it and enjoy it. And I could see so many changes from the initial plan that really reflected such a deeper understanding of like what you wanted your school community to be coming out of the charter school and into this innovation plan. Like a deeper understanding of dual language, just like much more refined and developed. And having personally gone through the experience of, you know, going through that own learning curve, I can really see how much hard work and dedication has gone into it. So I just, I'm incredibly proud of all the work you do and so supportive of everything. And I just really appreciate everything you guys are doing. Thank you. Thank you.
I also just want to say thank you, you know, for inviting all of us in and letting us take a tour. It's, when you talk about the joyfulness of it, I think we were even talking about that on the way out the door. Like we, we were watching Taya's class and it was, it just feels like there's a learning buzz in there. And so it's, I know this has all been really hard work and, and when you talked us through it, but it feels like you've been doing it for 10 years, you know, when you're, when you're sitting in there. So that joyfulness thing, it was, it's so palpable when you're in there. Like the school just feels, it feels like the teachers are enjoying themselves. It feels like the kids are enjoying themselves. They're totally invested. Like even just walking in the hallways, it just feels really good. I wish, I wish that this had been around when my kids, you know, when my kids were little because they were at 100% being there with Amber, Miranda's daughter. But it's just, it's a great opportunity for all, all Salem families and super impressive. So also, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, just a slightly different comment. Not that I don't agree with everything you both said. Sorry, let me restart that one. I like flocks, really, I do. I just wanted to call out the sweatshirt because somebody mentioned the color and the Celtics and all. But I really want to call out the statement on the sweatshirt because I think that's pretty cool and that we should sort of mention that. Sorry.
Any other questions or comments?
Hi.
Hi.
In your budget autonomies, are you requesting permission to carry forward the funds from one fiscal year to the next?
We have not used to that.
You've not used that, but are you planning to include that in the plan?
We, we did, we would like to leave some of those that we haven't used in the plan in the case we would like to use them in the future.
My, my one caution for the school and for the school committee's consideration is that that is, as you know, that would be challenging with our year-end budgeting process when we're often balancing one line with unspent funds from other lines. We have the practice of prepaying tuition. So as you know, we scramble to find any unspent dollars. So I just offer that as a note for consideration on both sides, the school side and for the committee side.
I don't usually have a problem spending all the money. We don't usually have much left.
Yeah, it's just not, it's not been a practice to carry money over from year to year, any, you know, with the city of Salem. So I want to stay in sync with that. So I'm not sure that would be, I think that'd be an autonomy we would be, have a question about. And then I, I want to say something. The other thing I would say is the, the length of the day I do have questions about because, you know, we worked really hard to try to get equity across the system. You know, I'm not opposed to schools that need the, you know, more to get more. But I want to be careful that like we don't set ourselves up with innovation plans creating inequities. And we talked a little bit about this during the budget season. And in the case of Bentley, Bentley does serve some of the neediest students in the district. So I, you know, I don't have concerns giving Bentley more support. And if you look at the way that the budget is set up, Bentley does get a lot, it does get more resources because it is more expensive to run a dual-language program and we're very supportive of that model. I, I just want to be cautious though that like, I don't want to commit ourselves to something that might be inherently inequitable down the road in terms of the time. We worked really hard to try to get like a consistent day for the district. In your case, it did mean a reduction, but for many of the schools, it meant an increase so that, you know, no kid was get, no, every child in Salem was getting universally, you know, high experience. I just want to, that's just something that will give me pause. I'm, I'm not saying that you, and, and certainly we would, it wouldn't be something I'd support giving, in, operating dollars to because that would mean that we were giving potentially more to one school, which has been, I mean, Carlton has gotten, not Carlton, but like Salt and Stall has had a longer day for a long time that the district funded. So I just want to, that's something I want to just call, call out. Yep.
You're not the mayor, you can't call.
Oh, sorry. Mayor?
Amber Campbell.
Did let you throw out the baseball pitch in the softball. The only thing I would flag on that is that I, I would, I do typically agree with those types of things in regards to innovation plans. But in dual-language programs where you are expected to do not just literacy in English and literacy in Spanish, but also biliteracy, not only does it take slightly more resources, it takes slightly more time as well. And then in, even biliteracy aside, the ability to bridge between both languages and set up those intentional bridging opportunities, those, those things do take time. So I would argue that having the option to consider returning to a, a longer day as somebody who does it in a very short day, I'm quite envious. So I think we would, you know, I would, I would recommend leaving it in on the off-chance that we did want to consider putting it back.
Okay, yeah, that, no, I can accept that. I just wanted, I, I just want to be careful. It's more about precedent for any of the innovation plans.
Yeah.
That we don't do something that creates inequities down the road.
And I, I think it's the difference between like in the inherent model. And I think what's so important to consider about dual-language is that it is English learner programming. That's how DESI bills it as and that it's specifically designed for English learners, whereas it's not just doing things differently for the sake of doing things differently for some kids. It's intentionally designed to be for, you know, students who are best served by this model. And so inherently, it keeps its, its strict balance just by nature of the program. And so I think it just, normally I would agree with you if, you know, just doing a more expensive model for some kids, it may not be the best approach. Whereas I think dual-language is such an intentionally designed program for our English learners and our multilingual students that, I think that's such a huge component.
Yeah, Amber Cornell.
I just have a, I actually have a question for you, Amber Campbell. So just because we were having this conversation about innovation schools in the last meeting is, it, you said DESI sort of has a particular designation for this. So like, in this moment, you know, we're gonna say that the innovation model is the right model to support, you know, growing the program out and, and for the staff and leadership to be able to kind of experiment and do what they need to do in order to, to make it the school that they, that they want it to be. But do you think that like going down the line, like I always forget how long these last five years, like that innovation status is better, would be important to continue to have around Bentley? Or just from your experience in the?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would obviously defer to Principal Rogers on this. So if you disagree, please jump in. But I do think that innovation status, unless you're intending to expand it into additional schools, I think innovation status is really important for unique models like dual-language because they do inherently need different curricula, different assessments, different approaches, different PD. Like everything is really completely different. And it's all well and good when you have a school committee that supports it, a superintendent that supports it, that, that's great. You don't feel like you need the innovation model. But tho- those times are not guaranteed. The people are not for forever. And so having those innovations in place gives you some amount of surety that like for the next five years, dual-language will continue to be supported like this. And I think that that can be really important, especially, I mean, like we're seeing a national conversation shift in how education period is talked about, never mind dual-language and bilingual education. So I think the more you can do at a local level to sort of give that trajectory of for five years, we know that these types of differences are guaranteed for a program that flat-out needs it to be. You won't have a successful one if you don't do it this way. I, I would say yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll make sure I respect the chair. I do just want to say, I do want to really compliment Bentley School too. I, I, and Deputy Superintendent Carbone can attest, like this is a school that has, the improvements at this school have, it's, and the folks that have been there, it's been a journey. And I want to thank Ms. Rogers and Ms. Tui like for sticking it out because you were there. Through a lot of ups and downs, the school had, it's really a joy to see as many people said. But I, I've, we've seen firsthand, there were some very challenging times around the pandemic. Implementing a new model like this was really hard to do and I, and I really credit the people on the ground because to see the transformation, it's, it's really a, a privilege to, to watch what's happened in the school through really intentional work around culture, climate, shifting expectations for kids, setting up systems. You know, Bentley is, deserves a tremendous amount of credit and Principal Rogers and the team. It, it really is refreshing to see the, the changes. There were moments of, you know, there were some dark moments as the school was trying to right itself, implement a very complicated work and to move to a wall-to-wall. It is, it is a joyful place. It's a place where kids are getting what they need. And I, I'm proud that, that we have a dual-language school and I'm proud that it's a, a school that's pursuing excellence and is moving in that direction. So kudos to all of you and to the school committee. So kudos to all of you, and to the school committee who, you know, who had, you know, I can't take credit for the fact that the decision was made to have a dual language, even though the timing was rocky. But we're still, we're here, and we were fortunate to be able to celebrate the program. So I do want to credit, you know, you to that, and I hope it never goes away despite, and I think your points are really well taken, Ms. Campbell. So it's a good way to, so what I, what I would suggest now is that we take some of the feedback, I know we have some from the STU and from others, and we'll bring it back to this committee, probably won't be substantive changes. And if there's any other changes that you would like to see us make, if you could just email me or, or let us know, and I'll talk to Principal Rogers about that. And so we'll ask for a final vote at the next meeting.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Member Miranda?
In terms of the budget autonomy, do we have an idea of what kinds of funding might be available for 501(c)(3)'s if we were to establish one?
You know, in terms of, like, funding to create a 501(c)(3) or just to have?
Like, the opportunities for, for funding.
I don't know that we've had an intentional strategy around fundraising. There are, there is a robust education philanthropy community in greater Boston that is focused on equity, so I would assume that there would be opportunities out there, but I couldn't say with any certainty about what a goal might be without doing a little more digging.
Okay. Thanks. And also, just want to echo what my colleagues have said. And obviously, my child goes to Bentley, and we've had, like, such an amazing experience. I wasn't really around or paying enough attention before when there was, like, this darker time, so all I can-
I shouldn't have referred to it as a darker time.
COVID, really. It's hard to open.
COVID, it was COVID, really.
COVID. All I can speak to is, like, the very positive experience that I've had as a parent, and I look forward to her growing throughout the school. So thank you all for everything that you do.
Thank you.
I'd just like to double down on it. I spend, I spend a lot of time with Liz and at the school, and it really has been transformational, the work that you and the team have done, both from a, like, culture aspect, the culture of the school and making it welcoming for kids and the family, just the atmosphere, it's just brighter and cheerier, and I think, you know, you've done an excellent job recruiting staff who are committed to the vision and the mission, reflect the cultural and linguistic backgrounds of the kids, and I just think it's a real shining star for the district. So I just wanted to add to that and say thank you to you and everyone on your team.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For the report.
Yes, so, moving on, I do have a memo here about inter-district non-resident school choice program, and which we do every year for those that have been on the committee for a while. We have participated in school, non-resident school choice, this means, yes?
Can I just interrupt and let the Bentley staff know, y'all can head out now, it's gonna, pleasure to have you, but no need to stay for the rest, it's a school night. Thank you, continue.
No, no, no worries. And I'm sure the Green will bring luck to the Celtics tonight, too. And so, the, we have participated in, in the last few years, and we, I think we've had some good success with the program. I did just want to share some changes to the recommendations. I am not recommending that we accept choice students into New Liberty. We have enough need here in Salem for those alternative school spots, and I want to reserve those for Salem residents, just because the demand is high, students need it, New Liberty is providing an exceptional experience for young people, and, you know, obviously, we want to make sure we prioritize that for Salem students. And in the past, they have accepted kids directly into New Liberty from other communities. So I am, I'm asking that we just focus our seats, open seats at Salem High School. And obviously, Salem Prep is, you cannot accept choice, because it's, it, you have to have the appropriate IEP to be enrolled in Salem Prep. I'm not recommending a change in K to 5, we do not accept choice students in pre-K. We have accepted the, the children of staff per the policy we have for staff, but not choice in pre-kindergarten. Again, I think those need to be reserved for Salem residents and for staff in the Salem public schools if we have extra spots, and those are highly in demand, as high as they've ever been in the last few years. What I am also recommending, and this is a shift, is to not accept school choice in middle school. I've had a number of conversations with Principal Softik about the transition of the Salt and Stall students here. I do think that's a, a bigger shift than we anticipate, well, I shouldn't say, maybe not for the students, but for the adults, it's going to be a shift. We want to make sure we get the culture right, we want to do it intentionally, thoughtfully. And I am also concerned about the class sizes at the middle school a bit more, they're, they're larger, and I want them to settle a bit, and pushing, you know, 25 and in some cases, above 25 at the middle school level. I think this will help make them more manageable at a pivotal time for young people, and I really want to make sure we set the culture right. We have a strong, speaking of a transformation, Collins has undergone a transformation in the last few years, and I want to make sure that it continues on a strong path. So I am recommending that change in grade six to eight. The rest of it is very similar to what I proposed last year. The language has been approved by our attorneys. I do just want to call out that last year, we made a shift in school choice, that we did not, would not accept students after the beginning of the school year. We found many, well, not many, but we had a number of students coming in in the middle of the school year, and that proved to be, could, in many cases, was disruptive. Just anytime there's new students, it can be a challenge, but oftentimes, when students apply for choice, it's because there was a challenge in their prior district, and do, and bringing them in in the middle of the year can be, you know, can be a difficult transition for the student and for the, the school. So September 5th would be, would be the final date in which we would accept students for choice. We are, we try to be supportive and flexible of families who move in the middle of the school year, or we learn that they, their housing changes, we try to accommodate them to the, to the extent, and you can see some of the language here related to that, and we've worked hard to try to support them, and then they can apply for choice in the, in the ensuing year. So students aren't unnecessarily displaced during the, the school year. So that is my proposal. As, as you may remember, the school committee has to vote every year to, you have to vote not to participate in school choice, but I still want to bring my recommendation to you. I also would like to have a vote to support my recommendation. But from the state's, from the Department of Education's perspective, all I have to do is report that we are participating or not in school choice, and they, they do need to see a vote of the school committee, only if the school committee chooses not to participate in school choice. But I hope that you will accept my recommendation to participate with these conditions, and I, you know, I'm open to any shifts that you'd like to see, but this is in my, I think, in the best interest of the district to pursue the, you know, this configuration for the upcoming school year. Turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thanks. Any questions for members? Member Miranda?
How common would you say that it is, like, looking at our numbers here, looks like we have about a total of 81 students? Would you say that that is, like, the average number that a district?
Oh, I don't, you know, I don't know. I think we, I think we're, I mean, for us as a district, we send as many students out as we take in, so we break pretty much even there. I don't, I don't know, I mean, I think it's becoming more common now, because districts' enrollment have been dropping. It's very common in Western Massachusetts, because districts have, have had declining enrollment. And it is becoming increasingly true about districts now in Eastern Massachusetts, because a lot of district, more districts have seen declining enrollment. I think, you know, I think it is, I think our numbers are pretty much in line. We've tried to, I know ours are similar to Beverly's in how many seats we allow per grade level, because I was just on their site, but not every community allows for choice. So the ones that do, I think, were pretty comparable in that area. Salem has historically allowed choice at the high school level, maybe, I don't know back in the day whether they opened it up to other grade levels, Mary, but-
Not, not a lo, no, not for quite a while.
Yeah.
That was more recent.
Yeah. And I do think we've seen a lot of interest in our district for different reasons. I, I think that's a good sign, especially when our staff want, our staff can send their kids, if they don't live in here, under, it's not under choice, it's under our policy, so they're considered not choice students, they're considered, I don't want to say actual students, they're all actual students, but they're, because of our policy, but I, we have seen more and more kids apply who are not having good experiences necessarily in other districts. So, but I also know that it, it's better for students to start the year with us than come, you know, all throughout the year. We, we have enough of that happening with students moving in and homeless students that I prefer not to add to that.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? Member Manning?
I have a, just sort of a thought looking ahead and a question, maybe. Jumping ahead to when the, when the new high school is, is open, and we have the whole CTE-
Yep.
-area, I sort of can, I can see, like, certainly, folks, a jump in folks trying to come in through choice from neighboring, neighboring areas that don't have those programs. And I just, I just wonder if, I just want to, I guess, make sure we keep that on the table, that maybe, that may affect how we think about the number, or also, is, I assume there's no provision if somebody comes into, like, if somebody wants to send their child here, it has nothing to do with what program they want to get in, right? It's just they come here, and then they can take any courses like any other student that's already here.
At the high school?
Yeah, because, I mean, mostly, that's where-
You can't restrict that, yeah.
So is that our decision? Is that how we do it, or that's just the law?
That's how school choice works.
That's how school choice works. So we don't have to worry about that, but we do have to maybe think about the increase in numbers, is this? Because some of those programs are going to look awful appealing, you know, to kids who aren't in this living here.
Yeah, I mean, I think when I had recommended a more aggressive approach to school choice a couple of years ago, our enrollment had really declined, and particularly at the high school level, but I, for a lot of different reasons, our enrollment has increased quite a bit over the last couple of years, which is a good problem to have. Choice has helped with that.
And probably some of that is that, right?
Some of that is choice, yes.
Choice for kids who want those programs.
No question.
Already.
And I do think a new high school will-
Yeah, it's going to be, like-
Yeah, we, we have to watch that, because I'm already worried about the size-
Yeah.
-as we've talked about in the public meetings, so.
Yeah.
So I think that's important for the committee to consider, and that's why I, every year, we should have this conversation.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
I just had a couple of questions. So regarding if a student has a sibling in middle school, or is their middle school age, they, they still cannot choice them, even though there's a sibling preference-
No.
Under this, okay.
No, once you close it, you close it for, yep.
And this is, the closure of sixth through eight pertains to new students, so if you're a fifth-grade student-
That's correct.
...who's chosen from another community, you wouldn't lose your ability to enter sixth.
Once you accept somebody, you own, own the student until they're graduate, until they're graduated.
No further questions? Do you have additional update?
Just the last update, as in the building project, and Member Manning and Member Cornell can certainly jump in, because I know you've been involved in some of these meetings. We had two meetings last week about the design alternatives for the new high school. We had, the in-person meeting was very well-attended, I think we had close to 40 people there. Strong engagement, especially when we discussed the design options of new construction, reno, or hybrid of new and reno, and then people got really engaged around costs of the building, too, which, you know, unfortunately, happened later in the meeting, but there was good energy around that. The Zoom portion of the, or the next night was less well-attended, but I was very pleased to see how many people came out to the in-person session. The design team and the project manager met with the executive team and the academic team on, last week, which I thought was, was a very good conversation about adjacencies in the building, meaning we looked at the different floor plans to see what needed to be near what and on what floors things were. And to have many eyes of, like, people who actually live in buildings every day and know schools was super helpful, and that we pointed out a couple of significant things that were problematic in what they were doing, and so I was really appreciative that they asked for the input of, you know, so those folks sitting over there gave a lot of really good input. And then they'll be meeting with the high school leadership team to do the same exercise around, you know, how they've started to look at the different floors of the, of the building. On Thursday night, there is a meeting, it is a public meeting for the, it is on Zoom of the school building committee, and they'll be discussing which of the design alternatives they're going to move forward with. I think there'll be a vote of that on Thursday night. So again, I want to remind people, that doesn't mean that that's the final design. We have not picked the final, what it's going to look like, it's just to decide whether it's going to be a renovation, whether it's going to be new construction, or a combination of both. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Member Cornell or Member Manning?
I just think we need to keep reinforcing with folks what you just said, that it's not the design of the building. Because I know people that were there the other night, several of them thought they were look, going to look at for designs for the construction choice that had already been made, and were surprised to find they were there to look at renovation versus, you know, whatever. So, and even the, even the article in the news the next day after one of the forums was sort of misleading in that, in that sense, you know, design choices, blah, and they're not. And I don't know how to clarify that, quite what the terms would be that would clarify that better, but I think we need to try to keep that.
That's good.
Even if it's just every single time we saw, talk about it, we say, we don't mean this, we mean this.
The good thing is that that decision will be made on Thursday, so we won't have to, of, of those three options, that'll be done. But I think it's interesting, I got a lot of, and I'm sure, I was sick last week, so I missed both of the, the public meetings, but even though there are some, like, placeholders in those designs, I thought there was really good public feedback about those placeholders, because I had looked at the design, and, and somebody gave me really good, they were like, why is, why would special ed be so far away from everything? And I was like, oh, yeah, I didn't even, I didn't see that. And it's not the final design, but just to, like, if that's where their heads are, to be able to say, whoa, like, we need to start asking questions about these spaces. So I thought that was useful, but I think that's a really good point, that, like, and the mayor said this, I think, in the last meeting, that this is really going to be, now come, you know, we're in that iterative process, where teachers really have to provide that feedback, and it's going to be a constant conversation until, until that final sort of interior layout gets, gets solidified. But I think that's, that's also can be part of our better, you know, communication strategy going forward. So it's a good point.
Yeah, no, I, I think there's been some good, and there'll be opportunities for more people to weigh in about where specific classrooms are and the layout. That's not, we're not done that yet, so, Mary, thank you for pointing that out, and we're going to continue to do engagement in the community over the next couple of months around that with different, you know, with younger parents, with some of the seniors in the community, with, you know, I think we have a meeting with the Salem Partnership, the business community. We're going to continue, this is the mo, this is beginning the moment where we really have to engage the public around the project, because it's coming sooner than we know, there'll be shovels in the ground, and we'll be talking about, you know, building, whatever it's going to be soon. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor. That's my update.
I think there's a finance and operations report.
Oh, sorry.
Transfer.
Yes, thank you. I have two memos in the materials asking for your approval of several transfers. The first set of transfers total $5,647.50. So while that is below the threshold that requires school committee approval, the funds are being moved from non-personnel to personnel. So what is, these are ML, multilingual stipends, they are budgeted to the ML Cost Center, but we are moving from instructional supplies in the DL program and the ML program to the dual-language stipends line to cover year-end stipends. So even though it's below $15,000, we're bringing it for your approval, because it is moving from non-personnel expense to personnel. The second memo is the transfers total $32,527. The second memo is the transfers total $32,527.65. That does exceed the threshold that requires school committee approval, and we are bringing these materials to you. These are needed to move money from stipends to supplies, including contracted services and training, to help plan and fund our summer leadership institute, which is a large year-end professional development opportunity for all principals, directors, and leaders. So, and- All our instructional- Coaches. That's right. Sorry about that, coaches. So these are both timely because these, all of these transfers are being requested so that we can continue to plan for and fund year-end expenses. So these are for your consideration.
Thank you. No further report.
Sorry.
Are there any subcommittee reports? Motions and resolutions. We have, our first item is motion to accept the recommendation regarding school choice for the coming year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Member Campbell, seconded by Member Miranda, under discussion. Any further discussion?
We're talking the one we just, the superintendent just-
The recommendation, so. All right, all in favor of accepting the recommendation. Any opposed? Seeing none, the matter carries. We have the budget transfer requests that have just been described to us, and is there a motion? We can do both of these in one vote?
Move to approve both budget transfer requests. I'll second.
Motion made by Member Campbell, seconded by Member Miranda, under discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed? The matter carries. We have third reading of policy 5103, controlled choice student assignment. We want to do these together?
Yeah.
And third reading of policy 5501, responsible use policy and media.
Motion to approve both policies for a third read.
Seconded.
Motion made by Member Cornell, seconded by Member Campbell, under discussion. No discussion, all in favor. Any opposed? Seeing none, matters carry. Any announcements from school committee members? Any further motions?
Move to adjourn.
Uh, motion made by Member Campbell, seconded by Member Miranda, under discussion. Seeing none, all in favor. Any opposed?
Mary, you want to stay a little longer?
Adjourn, thank you.